Good evening. I'd like to call the September 18th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I'd ask you to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Ms. Erickson, will you please take a roll?
Tinsley?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Kaluza?
Here.
Zimmer?
Here.
Duckworth?
Here.
Swenson?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do we have any changes to the September 4th Planning Commission Minutes? Another good job by Ms. Erickson. Thank you so much. We'll let those stand. Do we have any announcements from our planning manager, Johnson?
Not this evening, Chair Zimmer.
All right, the first, excuse me, item five on the agenda is consideration of the 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Plan, and Zach Johnson, our city engineer, is presenting. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Planning Commission members. Tonight, I am here to present the draft capital improvement plan for your review. Just a brief update of what it is. It's really a guide that's used by city staff and officials to keep us running well today and also help us prepare for tomorrow's future. We use the CIP to identify kind of the seven core essential services and infrastructure that help keep our community growing, which is transportation, utilities, parks and recreation, environmental resources, technology, equipment, and facilities. Tonight, I'll be highlighting a few of the projects. It's not all encompassing. There's quite a bit in there, but did at least highlight some of the few elements, walk you through that. I just want to remind you, it's not a public hearing today, but before you today is a request for you to consider the CIP and make sure it's in conformance with our comprehensive plan. So with that, I'll just kind of start and highlight a few things. We'll start with transportation. In the CIP, we have our payment management program, which is, we address annual local and collector road rehabilitation, reconstruction. You'll see on this map, I think, does a really nice job of highlighting how our improvements are really spread out citywide, and it's staged so that we try to take into consideration some construction fatigue that our residents and businesses might have. But we have next year's program project, which is Judicial Road along the west side of the city, and then you'll see here, that's kind of color-coded and number improvements that are highlighted for the next four years subsequent to that. Please note that this is a living document, so it can change year to year based upon priorities and needs and also other environmental considerations. We also have the freight rail car storage facility. The city is working with some stakeholders on constructing a 225-car track for storage. This would eliminate storage of the cars on County Road 50 and move it back into the industrial park. We also are working with the county to make some improvements to the County Road 1560 roundabout. We're proposing some payment markings and some signage to assist in what we hope will provide some crash reduction benefits. We're trying to get that done yet this year, but it may creep in a little bit into next spring. Economic Development Project, 215th Street down on the southwest corner of the city, we are proposing to extend public utilities, sewer, water, and storm, and then also to upgrade the road in anticipation of industrial development here along County Road 70 to 215th Street. We continue to see growth, so with that, we need to expand some of our county highways in partnership with our county partner. This project here includes modernizing Dodd Boulevard between 50 and 210th Street. With that, it would become what we call the two-lane divided roadway with turn lanes at the intersections. Integral elements of this included an underpass for the Lake Marion Greenway, as well as trails along both sides, and potentially some upgrades or enhancements to the Dodd Boulevard, County Road 50 intersection. You do see a roundabout there. You are aware that today it's a traffic signal. Just want to preface that, no decision has been made yet, so just take that in consideration. We put the date up there too as well to demonstrate that we're still working on that. Subsequent to that, the following year, in 2028, that's a typo, sorry, would be expanding that to the south so that we'd finish that last gap between 210th Street and 215th Street. Similar process, two-lane divided roadway with trails along both sides. One of the projects that is, the project that's priority for City Council is the County Road 50 Interstate 35 interchange improvements. What you'll see in this exhibit in the picture is what's called the diverging diamond interchange, unique to Lakeville, but certainly not to the state. But this would address improvements at this interchange. We've got some safety issues, some capacity issues, so this project here would address both of those, and then also improve pedestrian connectivity as well. Right now, we are still on schedule to begin construction in 2028. We do anticipate this being a two-year project as well. There are a number of stakeholder opportunities, where there'll be a strong public engagement effort here, probably beginning in the spring. That's another picture of it. Gives you kind of an aerial view of some of the side streets and some of the connections there as well. In 2029, we have programmed the Holyoke Avenue modernization. That's from here, City Hall moving up to 190th Street. Again, just kind of catching up with development, modernizing the roadway, putting in an underpass at 194th Street as we continue to emphasize and focus our multimodal elements with pedestrians and bicyclists. Another one, this is the best graphic I had for you today, I apologize, but we are also working with the county to improve intersections on Dodd Boulevard at 190th Street and 194th Street. At 194th, a roundabout is proposed to facilitate full access movements, and then at 190th Street, we would put in what's called a directional access median, which would be a three-quarter access, which means you can take lefts off of the roadway off of Dodd, but not onto Dodd. And again, that's 2029, so planning would start in a couple of years on that. You'll see, we have eight different traffic signals. I broke them into two categories to preface that the ones that you see in gold or bronze are in 26 and 27. Those are deliberate and part of a mitigation effort. With that interchange project in 2028, we do anticipate quite a different, quite a few impacts, and so we're trying to preempt that and get in front of that by putting in new traffic signals or intersection control things. So you'll see that Kenwood Trail and Kenyon Avenue is new, 179th Street and Glacier Way is new, Pilot Knob is existing, but then the Orchard Trail, 1 on County Road 60 is also new. The ones that you see in blue then are, the first three at least are replacements for traffic signals that have reached the end of their useful life, heavy on transportation. But we'll move on to parks and recreation. Couple of key projects that you'll see there is continuation of our North Creek Greenway and East Community Park. If you've driven through there this summer, you've seen we've made some enhancements to the park, as well as improved the pedestrian crossing of 170th Street. This would expand that and then continue the trails to 46, and then also finish off the Greenway Park. And then likewise, we have our Lake Marion Greenway and Ritter Farm Park Trailhead. That comes, that would make a connection basically from downtown, working northway, north and west over to Ritter Farm Park as well. This one is going to be broken into two phases. The first is that trail connection I talked about. The second then is we'll do some wayfinding and some enhancements in downtown to make a connection from the trailhead over to Holyoke Avenue. And with the development that you've seen, we have a number of neighborhood parks that are programmed over the next five years. Moving on to utilities, with continued growth comes additional demands for our water supply system. We have the maintenance of our existing system, which is in 2026, the Dakota Heights Water Tower requires a repaint, and then as we anticipate growth, we plan ahead for additional water supply needs, so we do have two wells programmed for construction in 2028, and that is subject to growth. Facilities, we have a couple of things. The first center is under construction now, and it's making good progress, scheduled to open in 2026. We have the central maintenance facility program for expansion 27. We also have the water treatment facility proposed for expansion in 2027, and then the one photo I don't have is the fire station five construction that's proposed to start next year in 2026. That's basically at the corner of Dodd Boulevard and Cedar Avenue. Environmental resources, we have a number of things that keep our, the aesthetic elements of our community strong. We have our lake management every year. We also have public land vegetation, our prairies, our woodlands, other assets, rain gardens. We have our water conservation efforts in relation to irrigation and reducing that demand, forestry and maintaining our woodland assets. And then lastly, we have the equipment and technology that we use to maintain our existing infrastructure, and then also for all our equipment and technology needs to keep all our departments running smoothly and efficiently. So with that, that's a brief look at about nine months of preparation and a real short little synopsis there. So if you do have questions, certainly would be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, I'm not sure if you have any questions, but I would like to say I went through that huge detailed document, really impressive, to see all the work that Steph has done. Commissioner Kaluza?
Madam Chair, I'd echo that. I know that there are a lot of really big projects in here that are going to keep the city engineering staff busy, that have been, I mean, have taken years and years to get to the point where they're at. So commend Mr. Johnson and his staff for all the work they put into this. I'm really excited to have a lot of these things go forward. I'm ready to make a motion unless anyone...
Comments? Commissioner Swenson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Comments and question, actually, too. One of the projects you highlighted was Judicial Road. Just kind of curious, since that lies on the city boundary, is there any kind of cost share with our neighboring city or anything like that related to that project?
Commissioner Swenson, that's a great question. Yes, we do share the cost of that project 50/50. We do have a number of JAPAs or joint powers agreements with our neighboring communities. That is one example where if we share an asset, we do share the cost of maintaining it. It'd be a pavement preservation project, so mill and overlay, no expansions or curb and gut or anything.
Excellent. Thank you. If I may continue, was just going to mention, any vote or anything we take on this. I am an employee of MinDOT, who is a partner in the County Road 50 project. I don't have any decision-making authority or anything related to that project. I have no conflict of interest in voting on this matter. Point that out. Last one was just an observation. It's great, we're doing all these projects and all these things are happening in our community. Many of them are desperately needed. I think of a lot of this stuff as things that people don't think about until it doesn't work, it breaks. We take for granted that we have running water, we flush our toilet, the water goes away, all those kinds of things. So it's important that all these things get done, but it all comes at a cost. And with all these projects, just note that the debt level that the city is taking on with this, it's going to increase fairly substantially, 50% in three years from our current level. So just an observation, not really commenting any further on that, other than noting it costs a lot of money to do this type of work.
The backbone work.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Travis?
I agree with what's been said, very specific, yet clear and concise, a great piece of work. The question I have is about water, you know, new wells, two new wells, you know, expansion of the water treatment facility. How does the city assess the groundwater supply in general when a new well or an expansion of a water treatment facility is considered?
Commissioner Travis, great question. We do have a model that we use that projects our growth and our demand as well. Any kind of well we have to do, we go, goes through permitting through the state. They are very careful and analytic in their evaluation of our need, and we do try to plan ahead of it. There isn't, it's not one of those things where you get surplus of it. So it's very exact, and oftentimes with our water conservation efforts, these wells get pushed back. If you've seen, and with the weather, you've seen like this year, our demand has been quite a bit lower than what we see at our peak in strong consideration because of the weather. So when we approach that need where we see that our volumes are such that we need to have additional water supply and additional wells, then we coordinate that effort, and it takes some time with the state to get that through. But that's just a projection based on anticipated growth. We just completed, we're just completing a well on 190th Street east of Dodd, and that one took quite a few years to plan as well, so.
Thank you.
No other comments? Mr. Kaluza?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend to City Council the 2026 to 2030 Capital Improvement Plan as presented, finding that is consistent with the city's 2040 comp plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson, will you take a roll, please?
Travis?
Aye.
Kaluza?
Aye.
Zimmer?
Aye.
Duckworth?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Tinsley?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your work, Mr. Johnson, and a good presentation. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, the North Creek Second Edition. However, that is to be tabled, is my understanding, so we'll just table that one to the October 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, so. Need a motion to table, sorry?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I move to recommend to table the North Creek Second Edition Preliminary Platte of 47 single-family residential lots to the October 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion prevails. Thank you. I rushed that one. The second public hearing, and I would encourage anyone that wishes to speak to please sign up in the back of the room. In order to participate, we need to have you written down, and then we'll have you come up to testify unless you're the presenter. So the chart house is next on the agenda, consideration of application of George Maverick Chart House for conditional use permit to exceed impervious surface on the Shoreland Overlay District in a variance from the required setback from Kingsley Lake located at 11287 Clamath Trail. And here to present on the project is George Maverick. Mr. Maverick, please come up and state your name for the record.
George Maverick, owner of the chart house.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Planning Commission members, thank you for having me tonight, and the staff as well, very helpful, Heather. I'm hoping you can allow us to continue forward. We'd like to expand a little bit our patio bar. Right now, it's a small 1,600-square-foot building where everybody's kind of hanging outside and gets rained on on a day like today. We'd like to take it down and put a 2,800-square-foot building, so we'd have 1,200 square feet of additional impervious surface. And we're already a little bit past what it's allowed, the 25%, because most of our property, of the 23 acres, 17 are water, so we're kind of struggling a little bit. And the setbacks are very challenging, because Lake Kingsley has 150-foot setback from the ordinary high water level, and our property is 293 feet wide, so there's no 150 feet to do anything. We have water on both sides. Anyway, the idea is to create this larger bar building where we would have covering over the seats, so get people out of the rain and the sun, and then we would have garage doors on two sides, five garage doors, so we open up all summer long, and ideally extend the shoulder season with a little bit of radiant heat from the floor. So instead of mid-May through mid-October, maybe it can be open March 1st through December 1st or something. That's the gist of it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. If you'll stick around, we'll have staff come up and present, and then we might have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Commission members. So as mentioned, the request tonight is for the property located at 11287 Claymouth Trail. It is located on the west side of Kenwood Trail, south of Kingsley Lake. The property is Zone C3, which is our general commercial district, and the comprehensive plan is guiding it as commercial and in the neighborhood planning District 1. Those, the comp plan and the zoning allows for commercial uses such as residence, restaurants, and banquet facilities. So the request in front of you tonight is a conditional use permit amendment to exceed the 25% impervious surface in the Shoreland District, and then a variance from the minimum setback from Kingsley Lake. The property owner, as he mentioned, he will be tearing down an existing outdoor barn that is kind of located here in the hatched area, and then the new bar, which is 2,660 square feet in size, that new structure is right on top of it in the outline section here. So the structure does require a minimum setback of 150 feet from Kingsley Lake, and that conditional use permit amendment, they are above that 25%, but they are below the maximum of 50% that is allowed on a natural environment lake. So as the property owner mentioned, the property is about 24 acres in size total, but there's only about four and a half acres of it that's above the ordinary high watermark. So the property is considered a legal nonconforming use. So as he mentioned, any additions or expansions to the site would require a variance. The building is proposed to be located about 95 feet on the west side to the OHW, and then about 107 feet at the closest point to the north to Kingsley Lake. So the original conditional use permit was approved in 1997, and at that time, it allowed 48% impervious surface. So this, the property owner now did a detailed site plan, and the impervious surface is coming in at, it's about 43% here, but we're, another plan, we're probably guessing about 46%. But both of them are under what was approved in 1997, but what happened was that that was approved to a specific site plan. So we're amending that CUP to tie it to the new site plan, and then the new improvements with the rain garden and stormwater treatment. So access to the property is not changing, it's just the one access point. Parking on the site with the new building requires 27 parking spaces. Factoring in the existing building on site, 170 parking spaces would be required. Looking at the 1997 approvals, there would be 202 parking spaces on site total, so it is complying with the minimum requirements. The proposed structure is one-story, similar to the building that's there today. The exterior building materials, materials are, I guess, with the stone veneer, but then there's these shingles that you can see on some of the siding, on this north elevation here, and then on the east and west elevations. So that is a grade F material because it's vinyl, so that does have to be upgraded to comply with our exterior building material requirements. So the property owner will just have to submit a revised elevation prior to City Council approval. Otherwise, the applicant has been working closely with Engineering and Environmental Resources in coming up with the final approved plans for their stormwater grading and erosion control, and they are, they're very, very close to getting that. So we're just in our final stages with that. The DNR has looked at this, and they had very minimal comments. Their main comment was just to try to avoid needing a public water permit, just to avoid needing that special permit with the DNR, but otherwise, they didn't have any other issues with the proposed improvements. So staff believes that the proposed location would be the most reasonable place on the property with the least amount of environmental impacts. So staff is supporting the proposed request with the stipulations listed in the Planning and Engineering Report and the findings of facts that were listed in your conditional use permit and variance, finding of facts in your packet. So that's all I have. Stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Planning Commissioners, the public hearing is now open, and I don't know if we have anyone that is interested in testifying or speaking, or anyone on the phone.
No, Chair, no one signed up to speak, and there is no one in the Teams meeting.
Madam Chair, seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. Public hearing is now closed, and we are open for comments and questions from Commissioners. We'll have either Mr. Maverick or staff come forward. Thinking Commissioner Swenson has questions?
I actually don't have questions, for once. I can speak, though. I was just going to say, from my perspective, you know, these sites are always challenging from a standpoint of, this originally was built in an era where there weren't shoreline regulations. It predates all that being in place, and so we're kind of stuck in this box now. We've got rules that came in after the original business came into place, and we're trying to make sure that we comply with the spirit and intent of the rules, so to speak. So always kind of a challenging predicament to see. I'm comfortable with everything that's being proposed with the amount of impervious surface on the site. I like the fact that you're adding a rain garden to the site to kind of work on improving water quality to Kingsley Lake. I think that's an important element of that. I was also pleased that the DNR basically made the comment of, here's how you could avoid getting a permit. Trust me, that's the path you want to take, is what I will say on that. But in any event, just to me, this is a longstanding business that's been in Lakeville for quite some time. Like to see the continued investment in the facility and the grounds, continuing to keep it a viable business into the future. So with all those things being said, I'm going to be voting in support of this.
Commissioner Kaluza?
I want to echo Commissioner Swenson's comments. This, you know, I'm really pleased with all the work that's been done on this. You know, this is a very longstanding Lakeville business, and I'm glad that we can help you to continue to be successful. This really kind of is the highest and best use for this site. There's not really anything else you can do there if the chart house were to go away, so everything we can do to help you to continue to thrive and be such a great part of this community, as you've been for decades, I think is totally appropriate, and I'm definitely in support of it.
Thank you. I'd make the comment that I think this was a desired location for prom at one point in my career, and so it's great that it's still around and that you're making improvements. Seems like a great investment.
Madam Chair, one other comment I think I'd throw out there. I believe the Planning Commission did a workshop talking about some of the items related to the site and the challenges and everything else. So while in one way, it may feel like this body is kind of taking a short discussion on this, we've already talked about, we've worked through some of these things at a workshop setting in a prior meeting, so just wanted to mention that for the public as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Swenson?
Move to recommend to City Council approval of the Chart House Conditional Use Permit Amendment to exceed impervious surface and variance from the shoreline setbacks, subject to the seven stipulations listed in the planning memo dated September 9th, 2025. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you please take the roll? Ms. Erickson?
Kaluza?
Aye.
Zimmer?
Aye.
Duckworth?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Tinsley?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your continued efforts and investment here. The third item under public hearings is the Launch Park Fourth Edition. It's to consider the application of Lakeville Flex Space LLC for preliminary plat and development for plans for a one lot, one outlot subdivision to be known as Lot Park Fourth Edition. And here to present on behalf of the applicant is Jim French, I believe. Thank you so much, Mr. French. As previous folks, please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, I'm Jim French. I'm the applicant for the preliminary plat.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I am a developer of small bay industrial space. We are applying for the preliminary plat to break the 20-acre parcel in the Launch Park Fourth Edition into a one lot, one outlot division. So it would essentially be an eight-acre parcel that we're planning to lot and then develop, and then the remainder, the balance, would be an outlot. develop, and then a, the remainder, the balance, would be an outlot, considered outlot A. Should I get into the project that we plan? Okay.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, okay. So like I mentioned, we are a developer of Small Bay Industrial Space, and our intention would be to develop the site and four buildings that were on the site, or would be built on the site. They're essentially between 1,000 and 1,500 square feet per unit, and the intention there is that we create a CIC, which is essentially an HOA with declarations and covenants and restrictions on the uses, and the intention would be to sell with a primary, sell each individual unit with a primary, I'll say, prospective client of being a small business owner, kind of blue-collar space. So we've, Kim Lee Horn has prepared the preliminary plat information. Our engineer is Oth Consulting, who's done all the stormwater and, and site plans for the project, and happy to answer any questions that might come up.
Thank you so much, Mr. French. We'll have staff come up, and then we'll see what else happens.
All right.
Thank you, Chair, Commission members. So this request is for a property that's located east of Cedar Avenue, and it's south of the future 222nd Street. It's north of Eureka Township, border there with the city. You can see the city of Farmington here in the northeast corner, but otherwise surrounded by other industrial development. The property is zoned I-2, which is our general industrial, and the comprehensive plan guides it for industrial as well. So as mentioned, this is a one lot, one outlot subdivision, to be known as Launch Park Fourth. Lot 1 is about eight acres in size, and the outlot is about 12 acres. Both lots would meet and exceed minimum lot size and with requirements for the I-2 district. So Lakeville Flex is proposing to construct the garage condo development, so this use is a permitted use in the I-2 district. So the complex includes the four storage buildings, condo buildings, and each structure consists of multiple individual units, and then each unit will have access to its own water and sewer. The proposed structures itself either meet or exceed setback requirements. There's proposed stormwater treatment on the entire east side of the parcel, and one access point along the future 222nd Street. So there is no separate guest parking currently on the site. Our city code does require that three parking spaces plus one space per 100 units is required, so revised plans will have to be submitted prior to Council approval that would just demonstrate for guest parking spaces, and that can be pretty much anywhere on site or in the north here, and that would meet our setback requirements. Landscaping on the property includes a row of coniferous and deciduous trees along the northern property line, and this does comply with our landscaping requirements for the city. There are no tree preservation requirements on this site. The buildings, I don't know why, it looks like it's striped. That is, it's not a striped building, but it is designed with smart side, engineered wood with some accent panels on the corners, and then the sides that are public-facing, they will have a row of stone veneer on the bottom. So this does comply with the exterior building material requirements of the city code. So the plans are consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and will conform with all the performance standards of the city code. So staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat for Launch Park Fourth Edition with the stipulations listed in the planning and engineering reports. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak on this issue, if you didn't sign up before, please come forward at this time.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kaluza?
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Opposed? This public hearing is now closed. So now we're open for questions. I know that I have a few, I'm sure that others do as well. Mr. French? Thank you so much. In my time as Planning Commissioner, I've not seen one of these garage condos, so I'll plead ignorance and ask for information, and as I understood, four-story with water and sewer, but you're having a CIC. Can you talk a little bit about the, how you use that and what restrictions there are?
Yeah, so the CIC is just to ensure the community remains with the proper uses. So some of the restrictions and covenants within the CIC that we implement are no noise, no excessive noise-producing activities, no excessive smell-producing activities, no overnight parking. The CIC is enforced and maintained through a commercial property management company that we've used across all of our sites. They're, they're tasked with holding individuals accountable to those covenants, in addition to making sure the exterior of the, of the facility is, is maintained and upkept. So they'll, they'll also contract with snow removal and land care and those types of services as well.
I'm going to follow up with one question. So it's sewer and water, no smells, strong smells, strong noise, no overnight parking, so you can't live in these spaces?
No, no, no. These are strictly industrial spaces. There is no, you can't, and that is in, in the covenants, but it's also not required, or not permitted anyways. But yes, you cannot live in the spaces. You cannot stay overnight in the spaces, to answer your question.
Okay. Thank you. Other Commissioners, questions?
Duckworth, please go forward.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. You mentioned four buildings. Any idea on total number of units when the project's done?
Yes, 98.
98, okay.
Yep.
And they're for sale, correct?
Correct.
Any idea on price point?
They'll likely begin during construction, the sales point will be 185,000 apiece, and that'll be just shy of 1,200 square feet.
Okay. And last question. Are these predominantly purchased and used by car enthusiasts, people with just toys for storage? Can you kind of walk us through how they're typically utilized?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a wide range. This is, this is our fifth site, fifth facility. We've seen individuals, like you mentioned, that have, you know, maybe retirees or have a lot of toys or want a little workshop space. We see, we see a lot of small business owners that might be operating out of their house, maybe have outgrown their garage or got kicked out of their own garage, or whatever the case may be. And this is a good transition space at a reasonable price point is the idea for these individuals to get some additional space, a little office set up. It's roughed in for water sewers, so you can add a bathroom, store some materials, do some paperwork. So we've had a, we've had a wide range, but predominantly those have been the kind of two buckets that buyers have fallen into.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Trafis?
Mr. French, just a question on the parking. As I looked at the, at the depiction of the four buildings, and it wasn't really clear on the spacing, but if one does drive their vehicle to the garage condo for the purpose of doing some work on their vehicle, where do they park the car that they drive to the garage condo?
Yeah, good question. I failed to mention, the, the covenants and restrictions in the, in the CIC limit the parking during daytime hours, not overnight, but limit the parking to directly in front of the unit that you own. So there are about three spaces available in front of your unit should you pull up and park outside.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I did have one more question.
Commissioner Duckworth?
Thank you. In the CIC, do owners have the ability to rent these?
They do. Yep.
Okay.
That would be like a sublease?
Yeah, correct. So they, if they purchase it and they rent it, there are requirements that then the board or the management company has to review that lease and ensure the uses are fit within the permitted uses of the, of the facility.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Kaluza, what's the Jeff Woody question? Commissioner Woody question?
I think there's two of them. First off, since you have a whole bunch of different units, is there going to be any type of, you know, numbering or lettering on the doors so that if there was something where emergency services needed to get there, they could go directly where they're needed to?
Yes, each individual unit will have a number on, on their door. Yes, they are.
Great. And then the other question, since, you know, these are going to be sold or perhaps subleased, are you going to require like any type of like crime-free or drug-free agreements for those that are purchasing them?
Absolutely, yep. And that is, that is of course listed in the CIC as well. And then there's, in addition, from a, from a security and safety standpoint, there is security measures taken, cameras, those sorts of things, yes.
Great. Any further questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you.
There are no further questions? Looks like we're ready for a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kingsley.
I would move to recommend City Council approval of the Launch Park Fourth Edition Preliminary Platte, subject to the nine stipulations listed in the planning memo dated September 8th, 2025.
Second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Erickson, will you please take the roll?
Zimmer?
Aye.
Duckworth?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Kingsley?
Aye.
Trafis?
Aye.
Kaluza?
Aye.
The motion prevails. Thank you so much, Mr. French. We look forward to your investment in this industrial area with something that I think is unique for Lakeville. It'll be fun to watch it develop. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is staff notices, and it looks like the City Council meeting at which the above items may be considered will be held on October 6th, and next Planning Commission is October 2nd. And is there any memo from you, Planning Manager Jensen?
No, just a reminder to Commissioners that after this meeting adjourns, we will be moving down to the Marion Conference Room for a work session.
All right. No further business being before us, we are adjourned to a work session.